We're going to call the meeting of February 15, 2022, to order. Please rise for the pledge. Council Blockhouse, please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording in progress.
Before we start this meeting, I'd just like to send out my and the whole council's sincere and heartfelt wishes to a very positive recovery for Richard Gill from a terrible accident this past week. Dick has been a member of the school committee, the charter commission, an original member of our town council, and much more, just an incredible, nice man in every aspect of the world. So to Dick and his family, we send all our positive energy along with our best wishes and prayers for recovery and hoping to see you soon. The Zoom ID for tonight's meeting is 824-0122-6251. The phone number is 646-558-8656. Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Council Honan.
Here.
Council Fusillo.
Here.
Council Munson.
Here.
Council Belcher.
Here.
Council DeMarco.
Here.
Council Flockhart.
Here.
Council Aiello.
Here.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Here.
President Luteri.
Yeah. Minutes were circulated from February 1, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion's been made.
I'll second it.
Second. Any deletions, corrections, omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the minutes as circulated say aye.
Aye.
No, no, the ayes have it. Minutes are passed. General information and recommendations, we have none this evening. Public hearings, we have none. Public comment, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make a public comment? No?
Mr. President, I'll be checking for the Zoom. There's two remote controls.
Yes.
Both approach the wall. Can I just add another one?
I don't see the other one. I thought there were three there. There's just this one.
This is my panel.
Now, there were three there the other day.
There's nothing back here.
I picked up my Playstation at home.
So I am assuming no public comments right now or inability to receive public comments?
We have one from Peter Gill.
Peter?
Yes.
How are you doing?
Good, good, well, thank you.
Very good, glad to hear. Name and precinct?
Peter Gill, Precinct 5, 25th and 47th.
Hello? Yes, Peter, we're waiting for you.
Okay. I just wanted to say I wanted to express my appreciation to the Public Safety Department under Chiefs Harry Gill and Anthony and Chief Wiley. As you maybe know, that there was a very serious accident that my brother was involved in, and they saved his life. They just did it so professionally and so willingly. They ran, literally ran to the scene and rescued him, what could have been fatal if they had. And the number of people in town were calling and inquiring. It's just business weather, there's no place else in the world like this. Everybody had been self-sufficient with prayers and condolences and cards. I don't know what else to say except to everybody in those of Public Safety people and everybody else who was involved. Thank you. That's all I got, just two little words. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, for your comments. And again, we wish Dick nothing but the best and hope to see him soon. Anybody else? Denise, no?
No, we have no other hands raised at this time.
All right. Correspondence, Denise?
Yes, we did have correspondence from last week that I neglected to mention, and I apologize for that. We had several emails concerning the town council wanting to approve the shared street grants. We had an email from Sharon Pulis about the concerns of the budget and the periodic updates to the town council. Then this week, we had several in reference to the water study report and their water bills. And that's it for now.
All right. Committee reports, there are none. I will say, just for clarification, the town manager's search is underway, all the meetings, executive session, so there's nothing to add on that. Once the search committee does its job and brings back finalists for us to review, then it will become a public forum. But I just want to let you know, everyone know, that that is well underway. Town managers' report.
Mr. President, thank you. First and foremost, I just want to thank the firefighters, police officers, and paramedics that responded right out here, right outside Town Hall last week. And as Mr. Gill so elegantly put it, made it possible for a person to be transported and cared for. They did a wonderful job. It's now a coordinated investigation, where the police department will support that investigation. The transit police and the state police are the primary investigators at this point. The district attorney's office will make a determination later on, either this week or next week, as to who's going to be the primary person on that. And it, you know, has to do with a lot of technicalities on the chapter 38 of Mass General laws and who's the lead investigator as an incident like this. So we have been cooperating with them, will continue to cooperate with them locally. It's a lot of information, local knowledge that we have that certainly helps the investigation, exactly where the cameras are, who has the cameras, and stuff like that. The transit police, all the state police don't know as much internal knowledge as we know about our community. So we'll continue to cooperate. Just in that vein, Mr. Gill's daughters has asked to meet with me. I'll be meeting with them on Thursday in my office, and we'll certainly provide any information we can provide at that time and certainly see what the family needs. And we'll reach out to the councilors if there's something specific that they need. The TIPS projects, Director Cala, Town Planner, KMP Law met with DOT this morning on Zoom. I was in a conservation meeting, couldn't join them, but I just want to put it on the council's radar that we'll be coming with a substantial budget line for the next phase of the TIPS project. So it's a $6 million project grant from the DOT. We have matching funds that will be due. Much of those matching funds has to do with either temporary or permanent takings of property as they do this construction work. A similar construction project down in Cohasset recently, the takings were about $1 million. We're estimating at this point to be about $500,000 or $600,000 range, Steve?
Yes, that's in addition to the cost of the appraiser. Those are just the fees to the, for the easements. And then there'll be a cost for an appraiser and obviously a cost for legal work for the title examinations on all parcels.
And, you know, obviously, people can gift the taking to the town, and we'll be asking for as many people to cooperate in the gifting of a taking to the town. So either permanent, or permanent taking, I believe, has one property would be a permanent take. And so we'll reach out to them and work with that particular property owner. The other properties are mostly temporary taking, so if we bothering and going on their property, it's more feathering out the driveways, making sure they match the street, stuff like that. But because it's a federally funded project, we do have to have appraisals done, and we do have to be ready to compensate for the taking as part of the funding of the project. So there are very specific guidelines, very specific forms that we'll be using anytime we contact somebody. The name, the date, the contact person will go down on the form. So it's going to be labor-intensive for the planner and the DPW director over the next year, just managing that one. It's going to be a substantial project, but it's going to take a lot of personnel time as well. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. Once we do have a number, and we'll be coming through, probably, I'll talk to Robbie how he wants to do it, but once we have the appraisals scheduled and a quote from the appraisers, we'll certainly come forward asking for funding for that source. I did not include this in my 2023 budget. This will be handled outside that budget process in order to maintain a balanced budget. COVID updates are very good. We're down to about 8% positivity rate from 18%. In the last seven days, we've had 35 cases, but it's about 10 households. So I think it's very good that we're trending in the right direction. Veritally sent me the numbers earlier. I appreciate her efforts and continued efforts in that respect. The ferry, still, I keep this on my town manager's report because we need some direction. We need to have a discussion about the ferry because we can't wait to April to make decisions on the ferry. If we're going to operate the ferry, we have coastal, Coast Guard inspections to do that will include pulling the boat out of the water, getting it certified and recertified. I talked to Quincy last week, who is very eager to continue our relationship. The mayor of the city of Quincy is now the Seaport Bond Council chairperson, which is all favorable to our enterprise. But again, DEP didn't fund us last year, and so we have some funding issues we've got to figure out. The sooner the better, so we know if we're prepping. Prep time's going to take about three months. So, you know, we've got to hire back the personnel. Last year, we couldn't find enough captains for the weekends. We want to close that gap. We want to start our advertisements early and often, as James Michael Curley said, and, you know, still have conversations going on with the convention center and some other private enterprises, seeking their help, advice, and partnership on the ferry issue. So that's all I have in my report. Mr. President, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Councilor Aiello.
I think at the last meeting, you indicated there might be some opportunity for Mass DOT funds for this year. Is that still in play?
So to close any deficit, yes, it should be in play, but again, they'll want a three-year sustainability report, and how are we going to sustain three years in the future without their funding?
And who are you dealing with over at Mass DOT?
I forward you the name. There was a team of them from DOT, but there's one specific person that's the lead person on this.
Because the mayor from Quincy is also on the Mass DOT board and the T board as well, so he's in a position to, I think, be helpful there as well. So, but let's have a conversation, and if I know the people there, can figure out how to get at that.
Yeah, and, you know, the Quincy representative was going to schedule a meeting with me and the president and the mayor, so to get in the same room to try to talk this up.
Any other questions for the town manager? Thank you. Moving on to school committee, school department report. The school committee met last Monday, February 7, and I will pass on some updates from that meeting. The school committee, along with the superintendent, agreed to lift the mask mandate in the schools as of Monday, February 28, going along with the governor's recommendation. The middle school play Frozen sold out for three consecutive days to rave reviews, and the high school dinner theater was also an incredible success. National Honor Society inducted an additional 29 new Winthrop children. Massachusetts High School Football Coaches Association named senior Peter Jervich to the all-state team. Girls varsity basketball won the Northeast Conference South title. And the Winthrop girls hockey goalie, Summer Talent, recorded her 20-second shutout of her career to break the program's record for most shutouts, as well as helping her team to an incredible 13-0-1 start this season with only a few weeks remaining in the regular season. That is it for the school department report. Old business, we have the appointments of the charter review committee, which, and again, I had gone over with legal to see this is, when the charter was created, we had five-year intervals where the charter, as well as town ordinances, would be reviewed. We have had three of those. The last ones began in 2020, and due to COVID and due to, we had a special representative race, which involved two of the candidates who were part of the committee. So there were a lot of detriments to that committee and enabling them to, you know, fully do what they were vested to do. So we did get advice, and we are able to redo the process. So I am going to name a review committee similar to town manager's search committee. The chair will be Mark Chappadelaney. It'll be vice chair by Vice President Ruggiero. Robert Carroll, Karen Chavez, Tom Chudina, Joe Hanlon, Kurt Malar, Todd Sacco, and Denise Quist will be the nine members on that committee. They will have, ideally, in a typical year, they would have until May of the following year, with the time restraints and the fact that, you know, we're a little behind the eight ball with this, since this was supposed to be completed last May, we're going to try to get this done in a timely fashion. I know Vice President Ruggiero has a lot going on with ordinances and with mapping and all that stuff, which hopefully will be a huge part of this with the ordinance review. We have had, over the past two or three of them, we've had some ordinance cleanups and stuff, but never really a good forensic sweep through the ordinances and very limited charter suggestions. So I hope to be able to look at that. I know it was a good document we wrote. It was not a perfect document, though, so it'll be interesting to see. Under new business, the town council vote to appropriate $19841 for replacement of municipal boilers. These, I believe, are three boilers.
Mr. President, it's two boilers. The third one has not been included in this package.
Okay, so which two?
Police and library.
Police and library, so, okay. So what is the dollar amount now?
That's correct all month for the two boilers. It's $19.
It is? Okay.
I just sent you both proposals right before this meeting. I know I'll get Robbie on the line to correct me.
Okay, so that's going to be referred to finance. And just to read the motion again, that the town council vote to appropriate $19841 in the capital stabilization fund for the replacement of municipal boilers or take any other action there, too. So we will refer that to finance.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilor Aiello.
At the last meeting when we discussed this, I had to ask questions about the boiler age, the expected life cycle, the maintenance records, et cetera.
Don't have the main, my understanding is they're original to the building, but I'm not positive, and I would ask.
I got a report right before this meeting. The library was done in 1994, placing it over 25 years ago. The police department boilers were in 1994 when the building opened at the post office. Those were new at that time.
Okay, so they're both 94?
94, yes. And we sent the president the proposals for each to be disseminated amongst the board members.
And we have a condition report on, do we have a condition report on the boilers?
I will have the condition report at the finance committee meeting. I will invite the people who inspected them in, as well as Rich Saffoni, who's in charge of building maintenance there as well, for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, we also have down discussion to produce an uploaded townwide zoning map, and I know, I believe Vice President Ruggiero had brought this up, and I would want to go to the town manager, because I believe it's part of your fiscal '23 budget request?
So the zoning is under capital request, and so we did a lot of money to look at the zoning maps and to consolidate and incorporate them in our websites, as well as to have updated copies ready and available for the public in different departments. So I believe we allotted $6,000 for that. I can check the budget, but that was off the top of my head. The CFO's in tomorrow, we're going to go through the budget again, but that was one of the budget requests I asked him to make sure that we funded in the 2023 budget.
Vice President Ruggiero, did you have more?
Yeah, so I think this request was from members of our planning board. This has been something they've been asking for for as long as I've been on the council now. So can we just sort of, it is budgeted for this interactive zoning map that folks would be able to, you know, access publicly on our website, you know, in color, because I think the one that we have right now, we use isn't even in color. I just think that it's important that we kind of get the ball rolling on this, because we spend a lot of time, you know, writing our zoning code, and then, you know, the final step here is to kind of present it and make sure that it's usable and that people can see it for the sake of transparency. So is there any timeline, and when do you think?
So once you, as soon as you approve the money, council.
Sure, all right.
So no, the 2023 budget will take effect July 1st.
Sure, right, okay.
And fairness, you know, you wouldn't hurt my feelings if you took it up earlier than that, but I think we also have to just make sure what maps we are talking about. So there's a 2016 map, which I'm not even sure has been approved by the council. There's a 2006 map in which the inspection services currently use, because that's the last one we know that was voted by the planning board and the council. I know Dave Rodriguez, when he was here, did a 2016 one, but I don't think that was, we don't have any minutes to that to say that's the approved. So before we do maps, we've got to look at and do a little research to make sure we have the right ones. And if the 2016 one is what the planning board and council wants to go with, then we just need to take action to cure that problem.
Okay, so it sounds like some coordination between the two bodies is.
Yeah, that's the planner.
Okay, great.
Who actually coordinates with the planning board, so we can get that done.
Okay.
I would also be in favor.
We can get all that work done before.
Trying to get this done before even July 1. And just on the similar vein, can we talk a little about the codification of the Center Business District and the zoning that went involved there, was involved there? Has that all been?
Well, that, you know, again, we had the same problem. So last time I was serving as interim town manager, there's a report that sits on the website that's probably, I think, about 100 and something pages long, that we went all the way back to the early 1900s to look at the Center Business District and what it included. There was maps, again, that was relied upon, that weren't voted or certified by the council or the planning board in the development of the CPD. Some of that ended up in court and has been worked out. But again, if you're looking at really saying this is the Center Business District, we need to have a surveyor out there with an instrument surveying and telling us exactly where it is, most of the work that I've reviewed has been done on paper survey only, including the middle school. So I've recently been looking at the middle school and what we have, and all the deeds and everything that's been collected and every design we have of where the property lines are, have been on paper-only reviews, which I don't feel is appropriate. And before you go over an RFP, we need to know where the boundaries are. I've asked the building inspector to, building commissioner, excuse me, to coordinate that with the surveyor and get me a price on what the instrument survey would be for that property more than straight by the boatyard. I'm concerned with the encroachment of the water line, and the boat seemed to be moving to the street more as the property there, his property gets eaten away by the water and the tides. So we want to make sure we retain our rights and our public access rights. And also, if we're going to sell a piece of property, the people know what piece of property we're selling.
Terry, so what is the most recent, I'm sorry, Council, do you know what the most recent survey we have available on paper?
For what?
For the old middle school and CBD. I'm specifically interested in the old middle school.
Old middle school, that was a title search done by KMP Law, and the actual surveyor was outsourced, they obviously outsourced that part of it. I want to, I know I said to the council president, I want to say it's a 2018 document, but again, you know, doing it on paper is one thing, and getting out there with your levels and your measurements and your instruments is totally another. There is a 30-foot rite of passage on Wheelock Street by a house that that family has that 30-foot rite of passage that was never taken during the eminent domain taking to place the middle school there. So we have that issue that also we have to deal with, and there's several ways we can deal with it. But I think it's premature to deal with it now until we know what we're doing with the building.
So, sorry, is it something where we need to have legal opinions by several parties, or is it a physical survey would be enough to move forward with an RFP and give a developer or give that a possibility? Do we need to have legal opinion given on the actual plot, or is a survey enough?
Well, the lawyers are going to rely on the surveyor, and when they get, you know, when we go to court, they're going to call the surveyor as a witness, right? So that's, you know, all the legal opinions we have, it says everything's been done based on paper documents only, and that's a stamp on everything, and that tells you something, that this is what we see, this is what we think it is, and this is what we're seeing from all the papers we're reviewing. But things shift, you know, and, you know, so I would say the lawyers are going to rely heavily on the instrument survey that we perform.
And so that timeline to get something like that done, that's not more than a month once we have the funds to actually do it, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
So I will have some quotes hopefully within the next week and a half, two weeks, and then if we can handle it within our main budgets, and we don't need it come to you, then we'll just go ahead with it. But if we need funding, then we'll come back with a motion to fund.
Council Aiello?
I just wanted to make a point of clarification. I think we were pretty clear on it, but just for those listening in, when we describe paper surveys, that means that we were relying on maps and other documents we can find as opposed to sending someone in the field.
That's correct, that's correct, yeah.
So there hasn't been an effort to send somebody in the field and provide that direct documentation, which is what we're looking for at this point.
Yeah, and they would use old surveyors' maps and opinions that were written and documented of the registered deeds as part of the title search. Thank you.
Council DeMarco.
Chief, real quick, I assume we're going straightforward on KMP's opinion of this, and they are hiring the surveyor, and is there a second opinion on any KMP, like?
So once we, they would not hire the surveyor.
Okay.
The town will be responsible to hire the surveyor.
Okay.
The town, obviously, KMP Law will review the surveyor's work.
Yep.
And give me an opinion on it, but again, you know, having somewhat of a legal background, I know the lawyers will be calling that surveyor if there's a dispute in land court or any other court.
Okay, that answers my question.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
There are two new business items for National Grid to request. We'll call it number 30571298, relocate One Pole, Mugford Street, and National Grid number 30529098, Hillside Crystal Cove, allow underground service to 600 Shirley Street. We are going to refer these to public safety. If we could, at some point, schedule a meeting, hopefully by the next meeting. Yes, Council Block?
I also wanted to tell you that when I saw these on the agenda, I called Mr. Cameron and asked him for an update on the double pole removal. Some new confidence to get that to me by tomorrow.
Good, thank you. All right, so these are both referred to public safety. We are going to a second round of public comment. Anyone here this evening like to comment? Yes? Karen Chavez.
Karen Chavez, Precinct 2. I don't know what I was hearing in the town manager's report, but he's not looking for funding for the ferry from the town. You said you need to know about funding. We know that we did not get any money from the DEP from last year, and you correct me, at the last meeting, the meeting before, you said now it's coming from DOT.
Well, this, this year's DOT.
But we have not received.
Two years was DEP.
But does DEP owe us money? I shouldn't be doing this, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think we could, well, why don't you finish your comments, Karen?
I want to know, does DEP still owe us money?
Okay.
We know that Quincy does. Quincy is interested. Are they putting their money up to show us that they're interested, or are they just saying we're interested?
I'd be happy to answer that.
Sure, town manager.
Quincy has always put their money up.
Yes.
You know, we're going back and forth on this year's budget because they didn't get the full service that we normally provide, and being fair and equitable with what we owe. And I'm being fair and equitable with what we owe and what they owe, right? DEP never has owed us money. DEP has granted us money. We requested it last year and DEP never responded to our request. So DEP is, they give us a grant. My comments are that we don't have it funded in the fiscal twenty-three budget. If the council wants a ferry, then the council needs to make a policy decision of where that money come from. And that's the only reason I keep bringing it up at the council meeting, because we need direction on that. And I think it's a policy decision, as far as an operational decision, I can't balance the budget with it, unless I kept employees, eighty percent of our, eighty-five percent of our budgets is personnel. So that's what I'm up against, trying to be fair, honest, and transparent about it. And if the council wants to override me, that's their prerogative.
If the ferry is in deficit, FY twenty-two, how can we say that we can put that boat in the water in April unless we get some funding from somebody?
I think the town manager just stated that it's not in their recommended budget unless we make a policy decision to figure exactly that out. It cannot be in the budget if there's no funding for it.
I'm not talking about going forward, I'm not talking about.
You're talking about fiscal twenty-two.
I'm talking about FY twenty-two.
Right, for this spring.
The ferry is in deficit. Am I correct?
I wouldn't, it's a loaded question. So if you just allow me, please, it's not a yes or no answer.
Okay.
So right now, it is in deficit. We are communicating with Quincy to close that deficit. I could tell you at the next council meeting if it's truly in deficit. But as we speak right now, we're going back and forth to Quincy. You know, prior years, they've given us one sixty-five. You know, one year was one sixty-two. If we, if we get that much from Quincy, we're not in deficit.
Okay.
If we get less than that, then we're going to be slightly in deficit.
Okay.
So I, you know, it's like, right now, I can't commit to you, I'm not trying to avoid the question.
No, I, I understand that, and I guess, it's just my thought is, you know, if you're already in deficit, how can you even think about putting something in the water that's already in deficit? But if, if what the town manager is saying, if we're going to get something from Quincy, but we all know as we sit here, Quincy did not get their money for last year. We know that, because the ferry was not usable, didn't have a captain, had motor problems, one thing after another. So they did not get their full whatever.
The only thing Quincy didn't get last year is the same thing, Wentworth didn't get, it was weekends.
Just the weekends.
Because we didn't have enough captains.
Right.
Was that it, Cameron?
It's just, it's mind-boggling, it's just, that's all. And every time I talk about it, I think about the, the report that the town manager did in twenty eighteen. It stays so thick, and I've read it I don't know how many times, and I still say, why are we still doing this? But again, that's my own opinion.
I just got to stay with public comment for now, but then I'll go back. Any other public comment in the room? Anything on Zoom?
We do have Shannon Polos.
Shannon?
Hi, this is Shannon Polos, precinct three. I have a few comments, you know, they're all generally related to the budget and sort of our financial condition of the town. You know, the first thing I just want to acknowledge is, obviously, we're missing, you know, a full-time town manager, a full-time CFO, a full-time treasurer, a full-time assessor. You know, those are obviously incredibly key positions. I, none of my comments are meant to be a reflection on our interim town manager, our lease chief, Terry Gilliam-Hanty, because I think he's done an amazing job, you know, pulling off two full-time jobs. So I just want to kind of preface any of my comments with that. One, the first thing I would say is, I, I do just think it's really critical that we start to get periodic budget-to-actual updates. And some of my emails to the town council have been in that vein. You know, I think as we enter into the fiscal year twenty-three budget process, unless we know where we are with respect to our fiscal year twenty-two budget and where we're tracking on actuals on our department, you know, line item, and knowing where we're, you know, either over or under, I'm not sure we can even possibly make informed decisions or our townspeople can, you know, advocate in ways that are informed unless we know where we're tracking. So again, I realize this is going to be a burden on an incredibly understaffed town department, but I, I just don't know how anyone is going to be able to look at anything in the budget through that informed lens, whether it be our finance committee, our citizens' finance committee, our finance commission, our town council, without those. So I, I know I sound like a working record, but I really, really implore folks to, whether it be, you know, hiring our, the consultants who's been helping in the physical capacity to put something together to kind of give us a, you know, seven months actuals diverse budget and looking at any material areas, because I think that's absolutely critical. So, so that would be number one. You know, obviously, we've got human negotiations that are upcoming. And I think people have to understand that, you know, based on, you know, our last year's budget, even with a certain percent increase, you know, just to level funds, you can level funds if you have certain increases, and so we're already looking at costs without that. And so I, hopefully, that's, that's really, really apparent to folks as we're heading into these negotiations. And I think, you know, the other thing that is important is that, you know, obviously, certain people in the town are, you know, they're looking at certain things that they're really focused on. You know, whether it be with a school department budget or elsewhere, and say, you know, I want a middle school, you know, foreign language teacher. Well, you know, that comes at a cost. Well, what are the trade-offs? And so I think really putting together some really tangible menu of options for the townspeople to help understand, you know, what are we really talking about here? You know, what, what are the trade-offs that we're talking about? Because I think sometimes when you're talking too much, you know, kind of legalese or, or financial, you know, acumen, you know, we lose sense of what that actually means from a services perspective. I mean, things switching gears a little bit, you know, one of the things that I think would be super critical from more of a top-line perspective, although difficult with not having a full-time assessor right now, is, you know, development seems to be top of mind for everybody. And everybody is really passionate, one way or the other. Well, one thing that typically comes up that no one seems to be able to answer the question is, is that the proponents say, well, it brings in town, you know, breathing right now. I've asked rail safety agents, I've asked assessors, I've asked several people. No one can give an answer as to like, what, what does that mean? Like, let's quantify what that actually means in terms of not only additional tax revenue to the town, but also sort of some of those impacts that, that have on our school department, public safety, you know, D W, et cetera. Because obviously, you can't just go and talk right on that. So I do think as we think about, you know, a future assessor and sort of future town manager and really strategic vision, you know, thinking about that through the lens of, you know, you know, the developments, that people are better educated around some of the trade-offs on that. And sorry that I'm going too long. My last point would just be about, in general, grant writing. I know that I've written about the shared streets grant. I just want to be very clear, you know, this isn't, questioning around shared streets grant isn't a question of whether we value life. I think anyone who would question, you know, a mother of three to say that she doesn't question life would be, you know, beyond insulting. But, you know, it really, it comes down to, you know, what are grant writing and what are the implementation and execution of that really cost? And the reality is that, you know, I think Terry Gilliam-Hanty spoke earlier about, there's a real strain on our current employees because we're down in such significant positions. And so I think we need to really, really think about the prioritization of some of, you know, these grants and things like that in the context of not only thinking that they're just free money, which obviously, they're not, because you all pay taxes, whether it be federal, state, or local, but what we're really mistreating on, on our town government in terms of the implementation of that in the context of an already very, very, you know, you know, depleted, depleted staff. And also, you know, there's lots of complaints about the center and, you know, all of these pinch points and, I don't know if you call them like bump outs. You know, there's, there's real practical concerns around some of the implementation of these traffic timing measures that I don't think people, I think it's getting kind of lost on people and they're realizing they don't want. So again, apologies for, for all of that. It's frankly, all does kind of, some will come back to the budget, but I think there's some of those insular issues. But, but thank you for listening.
Thanks, Shannon, you brought up a lot of good points. I'm sure the Finance Commission will be discussing them in earnest, as well as the council. But thank you again. Anybody else, Denise?
Julia Wallace.
Julia.
Hi, sorry, you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, well, so I actually wanted to speak just really quick to some of the chaos and confusion that's been happening in the center around. You know, it's still a project that's underway, it's kind of happened. Sort of some like reckless driving, confusion around parking. I just wanted to make the suggestion, two things. One, that maybe this is not an opportunity to use some of the resignage and tactical use of cones to something that makes it more navigable, considering it is still kind of a construction zone, but it's kind of unclear. So just to block some of the safety hazards out of the company. I've experienced them pedestrian, I know people have written on Facebook about it, so just wanted to elevate that. And I also maybe remember back when Russ Stanford was town council president, he did have a subcommittee about parking management strategies. And I think this would be a perfect time to revisit that. I was on that committee with our previous councillor, Christopher, and we've been talking about bringing that before. It was, it had a lot of great resources. We pulled a lot of best practices, had meetings with parking specialists across the region to put together this list of, you know, best practices for parking management. So as we start to put the center back together, you do striving and signage and, you know, time limits, all those things, how different spaces are bought, and exploring public credit partnerships. I hope that we can resurface that and put some of the lessons learned to action as we get ready to embrace our new town center.
Thank you, Julia. Denise?
I will leave. That is it.
All right, Councilor Ayala, you had a question on one of the comments you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to reflect back on, on the town manager's dilemma about the ferry for FY twenty-three, which I agree that there's sort of a disconnect there. I think the key is to try to figure out how to move MassDOT's decision-making up a bit forward. One of the things that is difficult dealing with MassDOT, you probably have experienced it, is that they're very compartmentalized. So you have a group over here that has a surplus of operating funds because they're, I was there at the time, we budgeted very conservatively. Ridership, while disappointing, is higher than what we had anticipated. So there's, there's a surplus of funds there. So those are able to be redeployed, not necessarily in the lane of the people you're talking with on the ferry. On the other side, we know that East Boston and some other communities are in the process of negotiating a multi-year mitigation agreement for when the summer Callahan tell us going to construction starting next summer, the summer after, but that will be this, be the following two fiscal years, possibly a third beyond that, which if that happened, and Wentworth could participate in that, that would give two to three additional years of fiscal sustainability. But that sits in another part of MassDOT. So I think the magic is to try to figure out, I would recommend trying to talk to the secretary to try to get all those groups together in one place, because it does look like a solvable problem. But as you point out, we got to know that we got a solution in April, so you can staff up and do all that stuff. We just can't wait till the beginning of the fiscal year. So if I can be of help on that, I'd be happy to, but that's, I think the resources are there, it's just getting those.
As you probably know, these meetings were a lot easier when we had Speaker Delio at the helm. They happened a lot quicker, so, but I'll, you know, sit down and talk about the strategy.
Sure, sure.
And, you know, again, I just want to, you know, emphasize, but Shannon brought up that, you got me and LaRosa in the town manager's office, that's why we requested the budget of the assistant town manager, so they can help with these major projects.
Yeah.
And while we're dealing with tips and negotiations of reunions in the health negotiations, we get stretched easily. So, you know, part of the ferry, we have to look for someone who is going to just dedicate and run the ferry and get it out of the town manager's office. You know, it's a part of the sustainability issue and foresight moving forward. So I would agree, we can all reach out to you.
East Boston, dealing with the city of Boston, is actually taking a very consistent point, which is that there shall be an MBTA ferry. If we can.
Piggyback.
Piggyback onto that, we can turn this whole thing into MBTA ferry and stop this annual dilemma that we have, right? So that's where they're trying to go, we should just try to tag on to the city people, so.
Thank you. All right, public relations and upcoming events, I will say. The Capital Assets Committee has a meeting scheduled for February seventeenth at five thirty in the Harvey Room. Public Health and Safety Committee is meeting February twenty-second at six o'clock in the Harvey Room. Finance Committee will be meeting prior to our next meeting, as will Rules and Ordinance, and those dates have yet to be determined. Bike Wentworth is kicking off in May twenty twenty-two. See a complete calendar on the town website. And we do need a couple of committee members for the Scholarship Committee. So if there is anyone that has a desire, it is a fantastic committee to deal with and to work on. I was a part of it several years ago and enjoyed my experience very much. I would encourage you to send an email to the town council. Anyone have anything, Tracy?
No, I don't.
John, Council President?
March eleventh, we're still having that blood drive, there's still a few slots left. It's at the Zenith Lodge at one ninety-six Wentworth Street. You can just go to redcross.org and sign up for an appointment or slot.
Council Belcher.
Yep.
Council DiMarco.
Council President, I think between the, your recap of Frozen and Dinner Theater and the thirteen oh-and-one girls' hockey team start, and the girls' basketball team winning the conference, and finally, the masks coming off our kids, that is probably the most uplifting school department report I have ever heard in my life, so thank you for that.
Oh, thank you. Council Flockhart, Council Ayala, Vice President Mageri.
I'll just tack on to Council DiMarco, and I'll say, don't forget the National Honor Society.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think that's important as well.
Yep, spoken from an SCOT kid. No other business before the council, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Council Ayala, second by Council Belcher. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, the ayes have it. Thank you.